Hello, everyone. Good evening Gerard. Evening Mary Lou.
Evening Gerard and Mary Lou.
Good evening, y'all.
Can we promote David Snow? Who is one of our city attorneys to a presenter when we begin the Mills Park item. I just want to make sure that staff knows that.
Will do.
Will do. You said for the Mills Park item? Okay. Yes?
No.
Good evening. Sorry, I was working right up until now. Jumped directly from.
No worries. Arlos, I think we can get started. We've got Commissioner DeRosa will not be joining us this evening.
Just quickly find my notes file. An apology if there was background noise there. There's a plane going over.
Hey, Arlos, before we get started, can I do a quick, two quick introductions?
Certainly.
Sure. So, hi, everybody. Javon Grogan, City Manager. Just want to take this moment to reintroduce some of you and to introduce to some of you Darcy Smith, who two years ago was our Community and Economic Development Director. She left us for a city we don't talk about anymore. But she came back because we're such an amazing group. And so she is now our Assistant City Manager, deeply responsible for all of our development services as well as the city's economic development program. She will have two departments reporting to her. She does have two departments reporting to her. Our Community and Economic Development Department as well as the Public Works Department. And in the interim, as we all know, Camilo Wu, our former Community and Economic Development Director, departed San Bruno's. We had promotion as the City Manager of Cupertino. So in the interim, Darcy is also serving as the interim department head for our Community and Economic Development Department as we embark on an executive recruitment to fill that position. So, Darcy comes to us with a wealth of experience and has worked on a number of projects that are still making their way through the system. One of them, in fact, we'll be talking about tonight is Mills Park. And the other individual, Darcy, actually, Darcy, feel free to say it.
Oh, well, thank you. I know many of you, except I believe Vice Chair Madden, so nice to meet you. But many of you, it's like coming home. So I really appreciate the opportunity to come back and serve you. I'm very passionate about public service and serving this very special community that I know is very near and dear to all of you and making it a better community for the people that live, work, and visit. So, reach out if you want to chat and hopefully I'll see you all in person as soon as possible.
Now, and I was joking, Darcy was the Community Development Director in Millbury for two years and associates now come back to San Bruno. David Snow, who we should promote for the cannabis item as well, is our, one of the city attorneys with the firm RWG who is supporting the city and will be here to support you, certainly with the Mills Park item and cannabis if need be as well. So I just want to introduce David Snow because he will be a resource to you, not just for Mills Park, but also real estate matters. And so, as many of you know, City Attorney Mark Safrano is intent to retire. And so, the city council authorized RWG to serve as the city's contract legal counsel and David as an attorney with RWG with specialty in real estate matters. And so, has been a wonderful resource supporting us since June, I think, and will continue to do so.
Nice to meet you all.
Hey, Mary. Great. And I just want to also recognize Maricela Marquin, who is also from David's firm. And she has been assisting us with the cannabis item.
Okay. Hello, everyone.
Take away all.
All right. Thank you, John. All right. Calling this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for attending the Planning Commission meeting this evening. The Planning Commission will continue to hold meetings remotely via Zoom until such time as it's determined that it's safe to meet in person. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you are in the audience and would like to address the commission during public comment for the item on the agenda, please use the Raise Your Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, planning staff will call your name, unmute you, and you will receive three minutes to address the commission. If you are joining by telephone, you also may address the commission during public comment by pressing *9. Staff will address you most likely by your phone number and unmute you. You also would receive three minutes to address the commission. Please note, anyone in attendance may only speak once per agenda item. Madeline, could we have a roll call, please?
I will be doing the roll call.
Chair Aliseo will be hosting the meeting tonight.
Great. Thank you.
Chair Harmon?
Present.
Vice Chair Madden?
Here.
Commissioner Biassolki?
Here.
Commissioner DeRosa?
Absent.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leffin?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
All right. You have six present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Chair Madden, would you care to lead us this evening?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible.
Okay. We need to go back over our minutes. I believe we have revised minutes because there was a printing error in the June item. And then we have our July minutes. Do we require any commentary or do we have a motion for approval?
I'd make a motion to approve. Do we need one motion for both or do we need separate motions?
I would recommend separate motions for each.
Okay. I move to approve the minutes of June 21st.
I'll second.
All right.
I move, I move to approve the minutes of July 19th.
Do we need to take the vote on our, oh, sorry. June 21st motion?
Yeah. So, Aliseo, if you could do a roll call vote, please?
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassolki?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
I abstained. I wasn't there that evening.
Commissioner Leffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
So, 50001, motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of July 19th.
I'll second. All right. Aliseo, roll call.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassolki?
Absent.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Leffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six zero, motion passes.
Sorry. Was that, Rick, did you abstain because you weren't present for most of that meeting? So I think that was 501.
Okay. For that. Motion passes.
All right. At this time, we receive public comments for items not on the agenda. If anyone present wishes to address the commission for something not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this time. Do we have any hands?
There are no hands raised.
All right. Thank you. All righty. Let's proceed to announcements of conflicts of interest.
I have a conflict with Item B, the Mills Park project.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. So I believe we'll be removing you from the meeting when we get to that.
Okay.
All right. So we can proceed to Item 7A. Our public hearing on the cannabis topic. And staff presentation, please.
Yes, Chair, Chair Harmon, I would like to turn it over to Brian Millar, our contract planner, who's been working on the cannabis ordinance. And during the question and answer, we also have Maricela Marquin available as well.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission, Brian Millar. So, this first time on your agenda tonight, this is a continued public hearing. Mr. Establishing commercial cannabis regulations in San Bruno. This item was put in commission at your 19th meeting and continued to this, this evening after receiving some public comment. Tonight, we'll briefly cover the direction previously provided from council to staff. A little bit about the areas way back around the canvas and some of the recommended recommendations for the cannabis program itself for San Bruno. We'll chart qualifying locations. Where can commercial cannabis, selected cannabis, commercial cannabis activities be located? And what some regulations might be relative to that and some other considerations before meeting to a recommendation. So, the council direction to staff, this goes back to identification of commercial cannabis provisions as a work program priority by council. And as part of that, earlier this year in February, there was a study session. And as part of that, earlier this year in February, uh, there was a study session with council going over some possible program parameters and approaches, uh, and at the conclusion of that study session, uh, staff was directed to develop some draft coded procedural documents as to how commercial cannabis can be, can be addressed. Thought is to provide up to three, uh, total commercial cannabis operations, and those could be in combination of storefront sales or distribution type, type uses in town. The focus, uh, the locations would be, uh, generally in the downtown area for storefront sales as well as over at T. Uh, and then for distribution uses, uh, yeah, the M1 zone, uh, north of Interstate 380. As far as the regulatory background, state law, this goes back to 2016, legalizing many aspects of cannabis use. A person 21 years of age or older, uh, local jurisdictions, cannabis controls as well. Uh, and then personal, uh, allows for cultivation up to six plus for personal use. In, uh, 2020, uh, deliveries cannabis to boats 21 older were also, also identified. In San Bruno, uh, current provisions, uh, profit cannabis activities, so the code would need to be changed in that nature. But before the permission this evening for recommendation. Uh, also in 2020, voters approved a cannabis initiative tax. In terms of the cannabis program, uh, to both storefront sales and distribution, which is for storefront sales, the idea is, uh, that, uh, storefronts allow for general retail sales of cannabis, or cannabis products, along with packaging and laboring of those products. It also include, uh, delivery services to residents and the like. And then distribution uses, uh, allow for distribution, storage of commercial cannabis products. To larger scale, it's lessons, commercial cannabis operators noted is that there'd be no retail sales as part of the distribution use. So strictly kind of focused use activity there. Among the uses not, uh, directed by council to be considered for, for commercial cannabis programs in Bruno, no cultivation, uh, no manufacturing, uh, no testing or labs, uh, no micro businesses, and then no tap rate cannabis events. And then we would retain the existing, uh, municipal code, uh, provisions for personal cannabis use. As far as locations, um, I mentioned the, the downtown core, and so this would be along, uh, San Mateo Avenue, portions of El Comino Real and, and San Bruno Avenue, and then likewise for, uh, for storefront, for storefront sales. Again, distribution uses up in the M1 zone, uh, for San Bruno, that coming in north of, uh, I380. Other locations could be considered for commercial cannabis, although obviously those would be subject to commission discussion and recommendation vote of the council who would ultimately consider, consider these locations. This is a map that shows what these locations would, would consist of. And so, uh, in the downtown core, along San Mateo Avenue, um, and San Bruno Avenue and El Comino Real, excluding the residential core within, within that downtown area. Uh, and then for storefront sales in these areas, and then likewise for storefront sales, uh, up here to the north, uh, at T. Then just a little bit up to the east, the, uh, the areas that are designated, uh, M1, uh, good support, uh, distribution uses. In addition to just identifying where these uses could go, another consideration would be for sensitive land uses within 600 feet of any proposed commercial cannabis use, so there's like schools, uh, youth centers, daycare centers. Uh, and, uh, neighborhood or larger parks would be, would be considered as such as a use under this code. So what we did here is simply just identified the, um, uh, parks and school sites, um, uh, that work in more or less approximately these downtown areas that would be considered. Uh, and you can see, uh, these are, these are 600 foot, uh, radius rings around these particular, uh, school or park uses. So effectively what would happen is in lane overlaying these, uh, sensitive use areas to the downtown core. For example, there's portions of El Comino Real that would fall out of that and it would not qualify for commercial cannabis. And then, uh, a, a shorter portion along San Mateo Avenue. As far as regulating cannabis and that sort of process related issues, more or less three steps. And, and I'll look, these are still, um, uh, going through further discussions with staff, uh, and, and generally this is sort of the, the, this how this would proceed. Three steps could be, uh, first, a, a, a person or company that's interested in filing, uh, or paying the commercial cannabis, um, approval from the city, would file what we're calling a commercial cannabis operator's permit. And then secondly, um, uh, proceeding to and filing the conditional use permit. And then lastly, sort of circling back, issuance of an operator's permit, not over issued, just briefly. So in the first step, the operator's permit, applications to be filed with the city. Uh, so you would have essentially an open filing period so that, um, you know, if there's an interest in more than one cannabis operation, it could be filed at that time. Um, we can have more than three that could be filed ultimately, applications filed, although ultimately the city would be, under this approach, would be capped at maximum three commercial cannabis uses. Uh, these, uh, under this initial step, operator permit, the applications would be reviewed by a team of city staff and that would consist of staff from multiple departments, including police, fire, uh, and then we also probably make the determination to complete this. From there, it would be essentially assigning a pass scale type of, type of rating based on a number of, of features that will go into the city's, the city's, uh, program, uh, for consideration, based on business plan and community benefits that an operator might be proposing, uh, order control plans, uh, security questions and that nature. Yet is that, uh, with an anticipated mention of 120 maximum, uh, seven or more would be, would be a passing grade as it were. Uh, from there, uh, a applicant, uh, with a passing grade could, could pursue a conditional use permit. Uh, that would be again reviewed by staff initially to make sure, and then ultimately presented to, to the commission for review. There is, they'll just probably, again, a maximum cap of, of, of three, uh, use permits could be, uh, could be, um, issued by the city. Once a use permit's in place and moving back, the city would issue an operator's permit of formal issuance. That's where we would also find, find, ensure that all the performance standards that would be tied to the operator's permit are recognized as part of the use permit. And then any other additional items or provisions that the planning commission might want to attach to that use permit, uh, would be identified as well, and all tied together through the operator's permit. There would also be annual, uh, review by the city, uh, for compliance conditions and operating provisions for that operator's permit. As well as as a requirement to obtain necessary licenses. As far as regulations, uh, the types of things that would go into a, uh, the review by the city and ultimately in terms of the regulations, these are the kinds of things that could also identify, you know, especially a good quality type of cannabis operation. We'd look at things like hours of operation, uh, the nature of employee training and, and personnel. Um, uh, that an applicant would propose to bring, uh, the provisions for order control, how that would be managed, the types of equipment that they would use in, in, in store or facility. There's a host of security provisions that would come into play as well, going back to personnel, opening itself, how that would be made secure. Uh, uh, storage of cannabis, uh, storage of monies, uh, records of retention, all those kinds of things would go into, into what we would consider being a, a necessary as well as kinds of things that would also identify a good quality type of commercial cannabis operation. Again, those things could be rolled into the condition of the city, the conditional use permit conditions of a pool. There could be other things as well that an applicant can propose that, that would certainly be of interest is the, uh, things like the startup rates to, to a, uh, to a, proposing for use for commercial cannabis, uh, who tax the community benefits, those sorts of things. Uh, including testing access. So a whole range of things can go into consideration of what, what either would be in terms of regulations or how ultimately something can be, can be considered by the city in terms of the quality of an operation. The considerations at the, at the meeting in July 19th, a number of questions were raised. We tried to address those briefly in the, in this chapter, which was provided to you this, this evening, some revenue projections, uh, some comments, questions about security and how police services might work well. And I'll note that, uh, I think that we have the, the police chief here available this evening as well, uh, for this, for deciding. Uh, order control for cannabis, uh, the idea, the extent which the city may, uh, be able to consider any local preference that, that could be provided to, to, to an applicant. And the extent, um, that basically what, what might any impact be to downtown businesses, uh, and so on. So again, we, we tried to summarize those in this chapter for you. Secure review exemption for this item, each, each project would have its, its own, uh, individual secure consideration. Uh, exactly the nature of that secret document still to be determined, see what would be a consideration. And finally, the recommendation, um, so the item for the commission tonight is really focused on the plumbing provisions, uh, which, um, are, are listed here in the Title 12. So the formal recommendations for cross chapters for the planning commission, uh, to group resolution recommending to city council, uh, adoption of commercial cannabis provisions, finding, uh, to, uh, municipal code, Article 3, which is only Title 12, land use, Chapter 12.200, commercial cannabis operations. And then amend of, amending, uh, provisions to Title 12, um, as, as, as well. So that is our presentation. Happy insert from the mission.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Millar. Um, do we have any questions from, let's see. Do we have any, a clarifying questions on the presentation at this time? I am not seeing any hands. Uh, if we don't have any particular questions, uh, we could open public comment. Do we have any, uh, hands from the public wishing to comment on this issue? I see at least a couple.
Um, Ms. Gregory, you have permission to speak. Just a reminder, you're allowed to speak for three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Von Gregory. I live on the, on Green Avenue. I'm speaking regarding the proposed commercial cannabis code amendments. I'd like to thank city staff for answering several questions posed at the July 19th meeting. To reiterate some of my concerns, in the area sensitive use sites attachment, why are there no buffer zones around several parks, including Forest Lane Park, Seventh Avenue Park, Seventh and Walnut Park, Herman Park, Bay Shore Circle Park? And what about the library? It should have its own sensitive use buffer, not combined with Allen School. The transit oriented district has been targeted for cannabis sales due to retail businesses already in existence. However, you've neglected to point out that the transit corridors are adjacent to residential neighborhoods full of homes, family, and children that will be negatively impacted by cannabis sales in their neighborhoods. I suspect that very few commissioners or city council members would agree to have a cannabis operation adjacent to their backyard, their home, and their family. And don't forget that many children walk through the downtown corridors on their way to and from school with their parents to retail establishments and on their way to many youth oriented activities located on San Mateo Avenue. Even the Posey Parade full of the city's children will march through a cannabis corridor. Is this a city with heart? Why have youth recreation centers such as the Youth Karate Center, the Petite Ballet Swim Center, been omitted from sensitive operations attachment? These centers are full of kids, so how are they not youth oriented? The city is leaving room for a cannabis center next door to a youth oriented business. And why does the staff report include the potential of lowering the gross revenues tax to 5% when up to 10% is allowed by vote of the public? The voters approved up to 10% and are expecting that. Estimated revenues will not cover estimated expenses, expenses of city staff auditing, reporting, police and fire administration reviews and regulations. And how can the citizens of San Bruno be assured that city regulations and code enforcement will be conducted when there are many other city code infractions that are not addressed? Such as construction fencing erected and not maintained long after construction should have been completed, vacant lots full of weeds, deteriorating buildings not brought into code. Where is cannabis enforcement coming from if we can't even take care of these basic compliance issues? And the police department and its one code enforcement officer is already understaffed. Cannabis will put more pressure on officers as well as administration. The annual permitting fee of $6,000 will not cover expenses incurred for enforcement. Where is budget for these? I strongly encourage the members of the planning commission to reject the proposal for cannabis operations in the city of San Bruno. If the city of Belmont tabled their discussion of allowing cannabis sales due to public opposition, then so can the city of San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Gregory. Um, next commenter.
Anna V., you have permission to talk.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Anna. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Anna Vialobos. I am a lifelong resident of the city of San Bruno. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts and concerns regarding the rezoning of our commercial districts that would allow these dispensaries and distribution center. Over the last week, I have spoken with over 50 businesses on San Mateo Avenue. I also went to the, well, in tot, in total 50, um, parties. Multiple businesses on San Mateo Avenue, all of the public schools in our city, including Cappuccino High School, um, and two private schools, multiple residents in our city. More than half of them never heard of this cannabi, uh, the dispensary issue that's being discussed tonight. They did not get notification of the public hearings. Uh, they do not know that this is being considered a source of revenue. Only 1,000 notices were sent out. All of the residents of the city of San Bruno should be informed of this and included in this decision making process. It should be, if it is being considered, it should be put on the ballot so that everyone has the right to vote on this issue. Is the power of this decision should not rest in the hands of five people. The cannabis dispensaries are a target for criminal behavior to come into our city. The city of Oakland had a dispensary burglarized with over $100,000 of dollars worth of merchandise stolen. Cannabis dispensaries are making it more visible and accessible to vulnerable youth in our community. It is legal in the state. Those who wish to partake in this can obtain their product, um, through dispensaries in neighboring cities like Pacifica. They can order it online. They can even have it delivered to their home. We are losing our shopping mall at Tampran. San Mateo Avenue is our original downtown commercial district. In recent years, it wasn't doing well, but I can see the businesses are starting to come back. I visited old and new businesses, saw more people with families and children visiting our downtown area. We need to continue to encourage and support positive businesses that bring, uh, good, positive economic and social development in our community. Uh, regarding the sensitive land use, the dispensaries are not supposed to be within 600 feet of schools. However, we have many businesses, as previously mentioned, that are, would, should be considered sensitive land use. Uh, I saw mu, dozens of children, um, when I went there that would be exposed to this type of business. Everybody should feel safe and comfortable visiting our downtown area. We need to be mindful of our families, um, with children, school aged youth, and our senior citizens. The decision being considered affects our entire community. The decision of this commission and city council will impact the well being of our business and our entirety, entire community for years to come. What kind of city do we want for our future generations? We should be looking for positive community building opportunities with our businesses, and we will receive revenue from Google. I'm running out of time, and our biomedical campus is coming into town. We need to support positive local businesses. And I speak on behalf of many people that don't know about this. The majority of the city of San Bruno doesn't know about this, and we have the right as citizens and a democracy to have a say in such an important decision that impacts our future for everybody. Our downtown business district belongs, belongs to our entire city. They should be taken into consideration for this decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. That was Vialos. Uh, next commenter.
Nancy Foreman, you have permission to talk.
Hi, this is Nancy Foreman. I just want to reach out to all the naysayers on cannabis businesses. To please visit one, what you think they are and actually what they are, are not the same. Cannabis stores doors are locked. You have an entry that you have to get through. I'm not saying they're locked, but there's a little entryway. You have to show your driver's license. You have to show your proof of age. They're, have their own security. They are cleaner than most businesses anywhere around. San Mateo Avenue currently has a liquor store. It has a smoke shop. It's now opening a second smoke shop in which children are invited to go into. I do not understand how you can say that a cannabis business is not good for the environment. I really encourage any naysayer to go and check one out and see the security. See really what they are about. It's also been proven that cannabis businesses also bring other shopping and retail while they are in the area. So please, I'm tired of hearing about it's not this, it's not that. Go check one out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've already mentioned that we already voted on it.
Sorry, was there an additional comment there?
Sounds like background noise here.
All right, I think that's done then. Do we have any further hands?
There are no hands raised here.
Okay.
Oh, we got one more. And it's Eric Grayson. You have permission to talk.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted just to briefly undemonize a lot of these things that are being said. First of all, at these dispensaries, it's like seventy percent of the people have like cancer, cataract, all just different kinds of diseases, anxiety. It's, it's, it's getting blown out of proportion with all of this, like the kids type of things. This is the future and this is going to be just like going to Walgreens, getting whatever they prescribe for you for having whatever cancer you have, breast cancer or even, you know, just anything like that. These, this is, this is, I mean, alcohol is way worse than cannabis. I just want people just like, just do your homework a little bit and you'll see like this, this is going to be great for San Bruno. As far as revenue for other surrounding businesses that it's going to bring. It's, it's going to bring life to this city. It's going to be able to eventually just make this city what everybody wants it to be. Like, we got to think about the youth that is coming up. You know, this, all of this is going to help provide jobs instead of kids having to catch barg, catch trains into the city to work. They can work in their own city. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson. Do we have any further comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public comment period?
Through the chair?
Yeah.
A motion to be closed.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, Alisao.
Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Chair Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Viasotti.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan. I think you're muted, Commissioner.
Aye, sorry.
Six zero motion passed.
All right, coming back to conversation among the commission. Mr. Miller, did you want to respond to anything from the, the public comment period?
Sure. The, as far as sensitive uses and parks in total, we can, we can take this as well. Again, basic forest, there's a porcelain park and a certain portion of El Camino Real. The library was mentioned and as to whether that should be considered as a sensitive use. It was not something I know staff had talked about. Thought was that that the intent is not to capture that type of, of facility in as a, as a sensitive use. As far as use centers, the intent, the thought there is that it would be primarily used to host recreation special programs for minors, not necessarily a business per state, more or less a clubs organization. So, these are martial arts studios and so forth. That was not a target for a consideration or certification as a youth center. San Mateo Avenue. So, we'll note that. Let's see. Those are the key, these notes I have.
If, if I can just add, so the state does dictate what the sensitive uses are in terms of the six hundred foot requirement from school daycare centers, youth centers. But within that, the city also has the discretion to add additional sensitive uses. So the city added parks. But if the commission, you know, so desires, you could certainly decide to include additional sensitive uses or could expand the parameters of the sensitive uses if, if that's something the commission would like to recommend to the council for consideration.
I'm sorry, if I can, I can just add on to that as well. One other element of, of commercial cannabis program is, is the discretionary entitlement. In other words, the commission entitlement. And so how the ad process would come, site specifically view for whatever uses, whatever cannabis, commercial cannabis uses, add a particular patient, looking at surrounding uses, nearby uses and just think, among other things, whether there would be sufficient compatibility, are there any elements in the operation that might present concern in terms of, of a security interest in the law? So those are the types of things that can possibly be considered on case entry spaces by the commission.
Well, thank you, Mr. Miller and Ms. Markeen. Are there any questions from the commission to, to staff at this time?
Through the chair? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Viasotti.
Could staff just confirm for the benefit of folks watching that, that this actually was Prop sixty four and it has gone to the voters? There were comments from some of the speakers about it, no one knowing it not being voted up.
Did you want to pick that, Brian, or?
Well, actually, I was noticing provided might be, might be their source first on there.
I didn't catch what you said, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, in terms of noticing, what was provided, I don't know, were you able to, to address that?
Oh, sure. I think the question didn't directly address noticing, but I can address the noticing issue as well. So there was a notice of public hearing that was published in the newspaper. So that did go out as required by law. In addition, in an abundance of caution and understanding that this is a very sensitive topic for the community, there was additional noticing that was done to all, to, I think it was within three hundred feet of the area that was being considered for cannabis uses. So this was like an over noticing issue that we did. In terms of the Prop sixty four question that was asked, so yes, so in, there, there was back in two thousand sixteen, Prop sixty four, which essentially said that cities have local control to determine whether or not to allow these uses. In response to that, the voters established a tax, the San Bruno voters established a tax of ten percent should any cannabis uses come down, be authorized to operate within the city. So it was a, a maximum of ten percent that could be imposed. And so essentially the voters were saying, if the council were at a later point in time to allow any type of cannabis use, this is the tax rate that they should be, that should be imposed as the maximum on those businesses.
City manager Grogan, did you want to comment?
Yeah. Sure, let me just found upon that because I think the public comment asked, can this be put by voters or, or should this be put to voters in block stroke? I really interpreted that as should the regulation that the planning commission is considering and the adoption of those regulations be put before the San Bruno voters? It is important to note that that is allowable. Adopting these regulations can either be done by the city council or by the voters. The city council did discuss that and elected to proceed downing process where the city council would be the authorizing body for the regulations. And during that discussion, the council noted that the question about should cannabis businesses be allowed in San Bruno? Should they be taxed up to ten percent? That question was put before the voters and that was a yes. And so that is why we're here tonight because these regulations in this process does have the city council as the deciding body for the regulations.
And then just quick follow up, that was Measure S, as in Sierra, of twenty twenty, I think, was where the city level vote was held?
That is correct. I was actually looking for that year, but yeah, I believe it was twenty twenty.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lethen.
Yes, thank you. I just had a, a kind of a smattering of questions for staff. Primarily, just little things that popped up as I was reading staff report that occurred to me. The first one is, is there a reason that the distribution business, the single distribution business could not have retail or vice versa? Is there a reason why, let's say, one of the retail businesses also wants to provide delivery? I'm just curious what the reasoning is to, to split it to and why it happened to be exclusive?
Well, good start. The thought is that for strong sales at retail or delivery services, probably provided for on a larger scale, that a distribution use would be more akin to warehouse type activity not to invite or have retail sales aspect there, just because it would change the nature of that use to a, to a commercial or customer based type activity. Not here, it's not customers coming to, to those types of distributors.
Okay, so, so it sounds like primarily just because of volume and what that would look like. They don't seem like compatible businesses. Okay, okay.
And, and just to, if you don't mind, I'm sorry to just add on. So cannabis retailers have, there's, there's two different types of retailers. There's the one that's just delivery only model. So you've got the brick and mortar store and you're doing nothing with deliveries. That's still considered a retailer. There's also the storefront that is a storefront and delivery business. So that's what's encompassed under the category of cannabis retailer. Distribution is a different category and the distribution is really more like a warehousing. And there, that's the category that's taking the product to the labs to get tested, picking it up from the cultivator, taking it to the lab, then taking it to the retailer for ultimate sale. So that, it's more really like a distribution of picking it between different commercial licensees. And so that's what, what the thought is for that type of use. It should be more in the industrial zone than in a commercial zone.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. So it sounds like also that's kind of where the odor control really comes into play because I couldn't imagine these little boutiques that have their little glass cases and little, I don't know, blueberries or whatever that they're selling would need a lot of ventilation. But it sounds like the ventilation is more geared towards like maybe the, the distributor.
It's actually both. So the draft ordinance requires odor control measures for both types of businesses and ensuring that none of the odors from within the business, you know, are, are smell, are emitted outside of the business.
Okay, okay, cool, thank you. And then another question that popped out in my mind is, is there a reason that the Sneak Business Park, the one that's adjacent to the cemetery and along Sneak Avenue? I was just curious why that wasn't considered. I think that based on the description of the, the distributor discussion, that that would not be fitting for that, that kind of business park, nor would a retail space. But that just seemed, that just seemed like a spot that was omitted, yeah.
Not, not that bad, an area, that area or others to consider. I mean, we, we, we looked at a number of different locations and at the Apple Trade Center and, and some of the neighborhood type, the commercial areas. And just concerned either in terms of compatibility with other uses in that area, any nearby schools and parks, those sorts of things. So it came back to the focus of, of trying to have these, these types of uses, where it's storefront sales uses in the downtown area and the more recognized commercial.
Okay, okay, thank you. And, oh, the last question that came up for me was, as I was reading through the security measures, number seventeen was written as using mosquitoes, which was like a high frequency sound device and to discourage, it sounds like loitering. And I just thought that sounds horrible for a downtown setting where we'd want foot traffic and, and people there to enjoy the businesses. I was curious if you could explain what the mosquitoes are.
Well, just the idea of having some type of, of technology that could deter people coming into the facility that's not supposed to be, so whether it's high frequency sound or small effect. That's something we can also look at too. Concern is about the nature of them.
So this would be something that would be, I, I guess maybe you could, if you could illustrate kind of what that use would look like? Because I, like if this was for downtown, it just doesn't seem fitting.
Almost akin to an alarm type of system for an element of an alarm system.
Okay, can, can you kind of describe how, how they're used or what it would look like for somebody walking down the street?
It, I didn't understand, it's typically part of a, of a security program that can be activated when, when the commercial cannabis activity is closed. In addition, there's surveillance cameras or other types of, other types of security measure. Also be this type of, this type of use.
Okay, okay. I, I still, I still have some reservations about that use, but so, okay. I think this is, this is something that maybe I don't.
Something we're certainly happy to take a look at that as well. If the concern is just in terms of a compatibility issue or whether that's the right type of, of technology to use as part of the security.
I will, I will just follow on Commissioner Lethen's comment. My understanding is that this, these noise emitters, there's a sort of a theory that younger people hear higher pitches and so that it will annoy young people and not older people. But speaking as a forty five year old who has quite sensitive hearing, I, I know I have encountered some of these high pitched noise emitters and can't hear them and would not love having them in downtown, even if they are only in the evening. Because I mean, you go and have dinner and come out at nine thirty or something. You don't want to be walking by an annoying buzzing sound particularly.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I mean, I could see maybe in a commercial area where you were concerned, but it seems like there's also going to be, if I'm not mistaken, I believe I read that there was going to be security service there twenty hours a day. And so I, I don't know, I, I don't like the idea of allowing any kind of sound emission like that in our downtown area or any place where, you know, what if they're closed on a Sunday or what if they're closed on a holiday and people are gathering to go out to dinner or something else? So I'm not wild about this mosquito idea, but this may also be part of the, the conditional use permitting discussion. Maybe this isn't something we need to get too far into the weeds with right now.
Should we make that, make it easily, easily adjusted?
Okay.
Do we need any sort of motion from the commission to put sort of addendums to the, the resolution? Or is that just going to be passing sort of a collection of notes to the council?
I think if we're. Oh, I, I would suggest that we wait until all the comments have come, come through and then once we get to that point, if we need to suggest modifications to the ordinance. I, I'm taking notes and we can put that as part of a motion if needed.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission? I have, oh, okay, Commissioner Johnson.
Sorry, I didn't raise my hand, I was a little officially there. Well, I'm in agreement with the noise situation and I think that, that it's, it's designed to be a deterrent for sure, but it really creates a whole number, another situation. And it feels, quite honestly, quite punishing. It feels like it's, it almost feels, I don't, it just feels quite punishing to those that are participating and those who are just walker buys, passer buys. It just, it doesn't feel humane in its own way. And I'm also quite sensitive to the noise and I'm an older person and I hear those noises. Um, and I'm also quite sensitive to the noise and I'm an older person and I hear those noises, uh, quite a bit. The other thing I, question I was about the odor, um, I, I want to be sure that I'm clear on what I heard. Um, and the question that I have is even though the places are locked down and closed in, does that, and they're trying to contain all of the odor, what happens to the person, the people that are in there and consuming and, and breathing all of the smoke? I mean, it's what, you know, how is that protecting? And maybe I missed something along the way, but if you can just, uh, give me a bit of clarity on that.
Sure. So, um.
Secondhand smoke, it's that secondhand smoke thing, right? Now, I don't know if that's the same with, with cannabis. I'm not an experienced person, but certain, certainly, um, uh, when I'm in a location and someone is actually smoking cannabis, there's no doubt that I can tell, you know, I mean, the vicinity that it's taking place. And being educator, I have, uh, seen children being pulled into an office, uh, and ex, and suspended from school because they come in with the odor on them. And they absolutely said it was not them. The parent actually took them to be blood tested and they didn't have anything in them. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of stuff in that whole containment of that. What does it do? And how it hasn't been, how far has it been brought out?
So, um, for, for the first part of the question, there is no onsite consumption permitted at any of the retailers, um, or distribution. Under state law, you could have consumption at retailers if allowed by the city. The city is not proposing in this ordinance to allow any sort of consumption. So it's, it's truly just a purchase and then go consume or smoke at home. Um, so that's the first part of it. The second part is, uh, there are odor control, uh, measures included within the ordinance that, um, so having certain air filtration systems, um, having a negative air pressure system installed to try to still control the odors from going outside the building, but there won't actually be smoking happening within the, within the actual retailer.
I was aware that they're not going to be smoking in the bay. It would be sampling. And so, um, it was my understanding that there would be some opportunity for sampling.
There's no smoking permitted at all.
Glad to see Mr. Malar's head going back and forth.
There is no onsite consumption.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, I was just glad to see that the, uh, item where, uh, record of sales has been removed from the, the suggested regulations. Um, you know, I didn't think it was a great idea that you'd record the name of, uh, the customers and the transactions. It'd tend to scare people away. So I was pleased to see that that was removed. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Um, I did have one comment, which was, um, I wondered whether, again, a sort of as an item to consider to, as a, a sort of formal comment from the commission, whether we would want to add, um, a little more flexibility on citing. I mean, I, you know, like, we still have the discretionary review with the conditional use permit. So if we added, you know, the Bay Hill Shopping Center, you know, which is a, a retail center, um, you know, and then it's sort of, it's up to people that want to open businesses to come and say, yes, I'd like to open one over there. And, you know, I mean, it's sort of typically having things somewhat farther apart, businesses find appealing, you know, rather than having two retail centers that are right within walking distance of each other, having one on the other side of town might be advantageous. And it would be up to them to determine that and then up to the council, uh, and the commission again, in the conditional use permit process, to determine whether this particular business proposal is appropriate. And so I, I, I think I personally lean in favor of giving more flexibility for where businesses can be proposed, without that necessarily meaning that any business would end up there because we have another review. Um, but I think I would probably add the Bay Hill and maybe, uh, the Crossing where, you know, next to the Avalon. Um, but, um, in any case, it was something I wanted to potentially, you know, if the commission agrees, add to our notes to the council. Um, I see Commissioner Johnson has a hand raised.
That was an error.
Oh, okay.
No, what I prosped was not, that was my intention. Thank you.
So I think we've reached the end of our comments. I don't know if we need to do any sort of formal vote on adding notes to the resolution before, uh, for, you know, a full vote to, you know, to pass the resolution.
I'll step in if Mar- Mar- Maricel can help. But having done this a few times with this group, I would just pose the question as to whether you want to make recommendations to amend the ordinance or just items for council considerations, since there'd be legislative body. And so probably one easy option would just be that if you can just summarize the recommendations, then we would forward them to council and you would make that as part of the motion to take action on the resolution with council consideration of X, Y, and Z. And then we'll make sure those get into the minutes and into, um, the recommending action that is then going to see council.
Well, I think the two modifications that I heard suggested, one was to discard the sort of hostile audio security measure, at least in, uh, at least in the commercial, the retail zone and possibly everywhere, just in view of the fact that you have night security would be affected by that as well, um, to, to remove that as sort of a formally recommended form of security. And then the other was to add allowing other retail centers, um, such as the Crossing and Bay Hill, um, with the understanding that of course they, it is a comeback for a conditional use permit. So we're not saying definitely there will be a business there, just allowing people to come and propose businesses there. I think those are the two modifications, uh, the one from Commissioner Lethen and the one from me. Um, did anybody else have any other suggestions that they wanted to attach to our recommendations? I don't see any hands. Does that sound good? Do we, are you good with that, uh, Assistant City Manager, Speth?
Hi, yes, that's specific enough. So the item you're referring to, the mosquitoes, which are not really mosquitoes, um, but yes, the high pitched item, that's item number 17, um, under section 12 dot 300 dot 100 of the draft ordinance. And then the addition of the other retail centers, just to confirm, you said, such as Bay Hill, um, and was it Town, Town Center?
Uh, the Crossing is the one that had been brought up in another conversation, but yeah, Town Center would include.
Yeah, there's not, I mean, just thinking about the Crossing, very limited opportunity there, uh, but Town Center and Bay Hill Shopping Center. So I would just ask back, back to the group, are there other areas that should be part of that? Or is it only those two? The more specificity will help us present this, these options to council for their final consideration.
I see a hand from Commissioner Lethen.
Oh, I just, I just had a technicality and I, I raised my hand right before this, this conversation took this turn. Um, I, but, uh, I do support those, these two items, um, being recommended to council. Um, and then I just had a little, sorry, I'm taking a little off track, but, and I'll go away. But, um, I wanted to point out then the draft ordinance, item number one, the date of August 6th should read August 16th. There was a date discrepancy there, but, um, if you were going to ask me if other locations, um, I think the ones suggested sound fine. Yeah, I, I like the idea of offering more flexibility, um, for the condition, you know, and, and the flexibility of them being considered for the conditional use permit.
All right. So I think, I think probably that, I, I'm kind of fine either way with whether Crossing is included. You're right, it is quite small, whereas Town Center is a significantly bigger, um, plaza and, um, is somewhat more, uh, separated from other uses. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with just doing those two, uh, the Bay Hill and the, and the Town Center as, as the recommendation. Do we have a motion from, uh, a member on, uh, the recommendation from staff was to approve a resolution recommending the city council adoption of, uh, commercial cannabis provisions? Um, and then with our two, uh, notes? I can make a motion, I'll make a motion to that effect myself, just to keep things moving. So adopt commercial cannabis provisions, adding to the San Bruno Municipal Code Article 3, zoning Title 12 land use, chapter 12, 300, commercial cannabis operations and amending other provisions of Title 12, identifying in which zones cannabis retailers and cannabis distribution facilities will be conditionally permitted uses. So. We have a second?
Let's second.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Uh, roll call. El Seo.
Kerry Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Day.
Commissioner Beasoppi?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Was that an A?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Or two motion process?
Thank you, El Seo. All right. I believe that brings us to the end of item seven A. Uh, thank you everyone who commented. You know, there are strong feelings on this. Um, all right, uh, item seven B, uh, the Mills Park Project Development Agreement. Uh, do we have a staff presentation on this topic?
Uh, yeah, yes, we do. I will be giving the presentation. All right. Hopefully everyone can see the screen. Uh, so good evening, uh, Planning Commission Chair and members of the commission. Uh, this evening I'll be doing a brief presentation of the Mills Park Center Development Agreement Extension Request that we've received. Let's see. Uh, as part of my, uh, presentation, we'll be going over the project location and description. Uh, I'll be discussing the development agreement and community benefits, uh, that are currently in the agreement. And also then go to the extension request and the First Amendment, uh, finally concluding with a recommendation. Uh, just, uh, wanted to start with the product location and description, just so everyone's familiar, um, at a very cursory level, uh, with the project. So the project is located on El Camino Real, uh, and is, uh, adjacent to San Bruno Avenue as shown as on the site plan here. It's a five point three acre site. Uh, it would include two mixed use buildings ranging in height from one to five stories, divided into smaller components. And with an articulated building, uh, setbacks and step backs, it would include 427 condominium dwelling units and 7,947 square feet of commercial space. So that was what was approved by the city council. Uh, next, the development agreement. Uh, so the development agreement, uh, was part of the approvals for the project and it's an agreement between the developer and the city, which clarifies development responsibilities and timeframes. It was approved in June of, uh, 2020 as part of the overall project entitlements. And the agreement became effective on November 3rd, 2020. And the agreement includes various performance dates with the fir- first performance date being, uh, November 3rd, 2022, for the developer to submit a building permit application for parcel A for, uh, the one portion of the project that's broken into two, two sections, parcel A and parcel B. So the community develop, the, the community benefits that are in the existing development agreement in, uh, include, um, $10 million in a community benefits payments for the city's general fund, uh, and in conjunction with the city's approval of the condominiums. And this was a doubling of the former $5 million, uh, base community benefit payment that included an option for an additional $5 million if the developer, uh, elects to include condominiums. It also includes a hundred thousand dollars, uh, to the city fund for bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the general vicinity of the project on city streets. And another hundred thousand dollars for, uh, parking enforcement and our implementation of a residential parking permit program. And I would like to mention that in the fiscal, uh, the fiscal section of the staff report, it mentions, um, a total of 10 million, uh, $200,000 in, uh, in, in, uh, funds that would be, uh, non-designated. So that, that's actually incorrect. So $10 million would be undesigned to the general fund. The other $2,000 would be specific, uh, for the specific uses, uh, for the bicycle pedestrians and also the parking. Uh, so the agreement, uh, would be that this, that, uh, also that the developer would work, uh, in good faith with San Bruno City Net Services for Internet and Television. Uh, there would be a prohibition on short-term rentals. Uh, there's a community meeting room in building D that would be made available for, uh, city meetings and events. And also an agreement to exclude a project residence for participation in a residential parking permit program. Uh, yeah, continuing on, it includes a 55-year term for affordability in excess of the city's requirements, additional commitments related to affordable housing. It also includes a traffic signal, a pedestrian crossing at Keynes and El Camino at the developer's fence. Also improvements on Linden Avenue, uh, which would include 17 parking spaces, nine of which could be used for, uh, city hall parking or civic uses. And San Bruno Avenue would also be widened, uh, with an extended eastbound turn lane onto southbound El Camino Real. So, uh, this, uh, I'll move on to the extension request and the First Amendment. So the city has received a, an extension request, a copy of the letter is included in your, in your staff report. Uh, the developer has indicated that due to economic consequences of the pandemic, that has caused, caused delays in the project, um, and a two-year extension of the terms and agreements, the terms of the agreement have been requested. So, um, the agreement has, um, uh, multiple, uh, triggers within it. And it, it kind of, in some ways, kind of creates kind of a cascade of other, other triggers within the document. Uh, but this is just a very cursory, uh, summary. So it extends the overall term from 10, 10 years to 12 years. Yeah, it extends the time to submit a permit for parcel A from two to four years. And then it extends the time to submit a permit for parcel B, which is tied to the permit for, for parcel A. Um, it extends payment of public benefits by two years, extends the condo application deadline for two years after final approval, uh, to four years and amends the life of approvals. And, um, I wanted to point out, there was an error on page 48 of the staff report, uh, where we had cut and pasted, uh, section 3.12 instead of 3.2, uh, regarding the wording that's taken directly out of, uh, the First Amendment agreement for the life of the approvals. Um, so I've included the text here and we've, uh, we just wanted to bring that, um, to your attention. The, uh, the text in the actual agreement is, is correct in the First Amendment. So, uh, in conclusion, uh, staff has recommended that you adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the First Amendment to the development agreement with Williams Portfolio 16, based on the findings for approval in the ordinance, including, uh, sequel conformity determination. Um, and then there would be, uh, minor wording adjustments to, uh, the Point Commission Resolution, uh, by the city attorney before it goes on to, uh, the city council. Uh, non, on, non-substantive, uh, just, uh, adjustments. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and we've got, uh, David Snow, um, also on the, on the one, who's our city attorney, who, uh, who has, uh, um, also on the, on the one, who's our city attorney, who, uh, who has, uh, worked on the First Amendment and is also available to questions.
Thank you, Michael. Um, at this time, do you have any clarifying questions on the topic, uh, from the commission? I see a hand from Vice Chair Madden.
Um, yeah, question about, uh, I think you said there was a November deadline to submit for permit or something. That, what's the new date, uh, with this extension?
So it'd go from November third of twenty twenty-two, uh, to November third of twenty twenty-four, for the submital of the first building permit.
Okay, so, um, it sounds like they're waiting out the market, so construction costs go down. So what happens if they don't submit by then, will this ask for another extension?
Uh, the, well, I guess Dave could also help me with the options here, but that, yeah, well, they could request an additional extension or, um, also the term, a termination of the agreement.
Right, um, there's also a provision that allows for a, uh, one-time extension with payment of a fee, that they could exercise that as well, uh, that I think would give them some additional, uh, time. So that would be an option as well, that's a, that's an option, uh, that, that remains in the agreement.
So would this would not be that one-time extension, this would be, it would, that would be preserved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Um, there was a bullet point that we talked about, uh, city, um, uh, city meeting, uh, place, location in Building B for, uh, meetings and events. And because it's been some time ago, um, I don't recall if there, how the parking was being addressed for those meetings and events, particularly if it's evening, people have gotten back home, you know. Streets are gonna be part of the, uh, parking for the, for those that live there. Uh, is there, it, what's, first of all, I guess I should say, what's the capacity? Or is it just too early to ask the capacity of that room? If it's for ten people, it's a non-issue, right? But if we're talking about the capacity of that room for a couple hundred people and parking hasn't been designated, then, uh, it'll overflow into our communities. I'm just wanting to, to check in about that.
And I-
Do you want me to attempt to answer that?
Yes, I apologize, I don't have the site plan memorized.
It might be too premature and too long, you know, but anyway.
No, it's, it's, it's still a good question, I can answer since I spent two years working on this. Good project, and I want to emphasize that, um, there are a myriad of reasons why we're here tonight. Um, it's not just, it's not just the cost of construction, it's not one thing. Um, different projects, move at different speeds. Um, and in this particular one, um, they simply, there were simply a variety of delays that impacted their ability to move forward with the project under the deadlines. And having worked on this development agreement and negotiated, I can just tell you, we were aggressive because as you know, there are a number of vacancies there. So we did have an aggressive timeline. Um, and this is not an uncommon thing, when you set aggressive timelines and triggers to come back, I'd be presented with, and I think we will, we'll all agree that there were, you know, that things have changed in a variety of ways over the last two years and five months. So here we are tonight, but the community room, that was again, negotiated item in the development agreement that we felt was important, given the lack of, um, community meeting spaces vicinity. Uh, we will have more space coming online with the Recreation Aquatic Center, uh, but this is a good location relative to our downtown and the transit quarters. So the, I believe that room is, is not a large room for large events. We would still have to use probably a city facility if we wanted to host a big meeting, um, such as the Senior Center, Recreation Aquatic Center. Uh, but it's still a nice room, um, but there is resident parking on the site, which I believe is gated for security reasons, which makes sense, much like a garage, you want it secured at night. There's open parking though, for customers of the retail businesses, right? And so presumably, visitors to the community room could park there, or they could park on the street. Uh, but there isn't, in the zoning code, there's not a requirement for parking for the community room. So I think we just have to wait and see, you know, what the demand is, what the time is, it could be a daytime thing, early evening thing, and it is near city hall, um, and near our downtown and we would obviously make city hall parking available if people wanted to walk, um, and so on. But we'll certainly, if we, if we run a problem and there's a lot of spillover parking, you know, we'll address it that time down the road, we take parking issues very seriously here.
Yeah, thank you.
Could I ask really quickly, the, the city hall lot would be, like, roughly one block away and that's like a hundred spaces and largely empty at night?
Yes, and that would certainly be available. And we could work with, on signage, you know, put out some A-frame signs to direct people or, or publicize where to park for a pleasant walk, um, for the event.
All right, thank you.
John Grogan just wanted to expound upon that briefly. Uh, worth noting that that community room, uh, is not designed as a purposely built public space. It's actually the amenities space for the residents of the apartment building and the allowance to, uh, for the community to use that room, uh, was actually something that came up fairly late in the process. It was sort of observed that they were gonna have, I believe it's on the ground floor, directly across from where the library is, a meeting space. You know, I, I want to say less than thirty, uh, people in that space. Um, but it's really a amenities space and so it was thought, well, if the library is having a program and they need slightly larger space or another space, wouldn't it be nice to allow the, uh, community to use that space? And so that's really, uh, what that space is and, and why, uh, it's, it's in the DA to allow the community to use it. Uh, and I do believe we talked about the reservations for that space would go through the city and so it, it would not be a space that, um, any, um, member of the community could, uh, go to that, uh, uh, apartment, um, um, management company and say, can we use your space? So it would, it would really be designated for city use, uh, reserved for the city.
Great, thank you. Um, I have one quick question, uh, in regard to the, the point about the working at CityNet. Is there an anticipation that we will expand the fiber pilot through this program?
Uh, so, uh, with, uh, large multi-unit buildings, uh, we are planning to and have planned to fiber those buildings as they come online and so we do have fiber optic infrastructure, uh, in that vicinity. And, uh, yes, CityNet, um, uh, has planned to be able to provide one gigabit fiber, fiber service in that building.
Great, thank you. Are there any other, uh, any other questions from the commission? I am not seeing any, um, so I guess we can open for public comment. Um, do we have any hands from the public? We have one hand, Anna V, you have permission to talk.
Yes, thank you, um, I'm new to the information that you've given in the project. Um, one thing that I did want to, uh, request, um, because I've lived here my whole life, I know housing is definitely an issue, it is especially an issue for our first responders. I would like to see that, uh, a number of units can be set aside to accommodate our emergency personnel from the police, the fire, um, departments, as well as local teachers, um, local medical personnel such as nurses. Um, because currently, the price of homes, um, in our community is out of the price range for especially our first responders and they have to, you know, find homes one and two hours away and create into our city. And in the event of a critical incident, especially if we're starting to build these large buildings, um, we need to have all of our first responders within the immediate vicinity and they need to have, um, housing that they can afford purchase. Um, so I'd like to see if there is something that can be, um, added into these negotiations and agreements that allows for a portion of these, um, housing units to be set aside to accommodate our first responders. I think that's a basic and important need for our community's wellbeing. And then I don't know how, um, parking spaces are being addressed. Um, I, I live on the six hundred block of Green, we have severe parking issues now and with some of these buildings that are being proposed on that side of El Camino, and I've heard there's some coming on our side of El Camino, um, I would like to, to request that there be adequate, um, parking, parking spaces allowed for all of the units. Um, though this is considered a transit corridor and that people will be quote-unquote using our public transportation, that is not the case in reality. They still will need a car to get to work if they're far away, to go on vacation, to do trips to other areas of, you know, where public transportation isn't readily accessible. So I would like to hopefully request that there's sufficient parking spaces for these, uh, units so that it does not impact us, um, uh, local, uh, long-time residents. And, um, thank you for everything that you're doing. Everything that you're reviewing on behalf of our, our citizenry is greatly appreciated and we appreciate all time and effort you put into these, all of these different projects. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, uh, do we have any other hands?
There are no hands raised, Chair.
All right, thank you, uh, do we have a motion to close, uh, public comment?
I move that we close the public comment.
I will second, oh, or you can. All right, Commissioner Leffin in seconds. Roll call please.
Kerry Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Beasoppi?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Leffin?
Aye.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you, um, do we have any, uh, further discussion or, uh, response to the comments? Do we need a response from staff in regard to the comments?
I would, I would like to just respond to the affordable housing question. So on page one fifty-four, uh, uh, in your packet, one fifty-four, uh, one sixty-five, there's a, an affordable housing, uh, plan unit matrix. So, uh, just to respond to the affordable housing question, uh, many of the, there's a large number of units that will be set aside as affordable at various affordability levels, uh, which would also allow for, uh, you know, first responders and, uh, uh, local service workers to, uh, to move into the project. Uh, then on the following pages, there are, uh, our, uh, site plans and also, uh, diagrams of the location of the units within the project. So that, that, uh, is, that is being addressed.
Could I actually, in regard to the, the parking comment, um, I have a recollection and, and maybe you can clarify whether I'm remembering it correctly, but there was a condition of approval on this project that if the residents of that neighborhood opt into a residential parking permit program so that only, yeah, right, residents can get permits to park on the street, that the occupants of the apartment would not be allowed to participate in that, that it would be exclusively for the, the homeowners in the pre-existing neighborhood. And in addition to that, the parking study that accompanied the project, um, had been done looking at comparative, uh, similar buildings down El Camino and that the amount of parking that was being provided here was a good bit more than what was suggested by that. I forget the exact numbers, but it was like ten or fifteen percent more than what was required by the, you know, what, what would be suggested by actual car ownership in those similar buildings down through Millbrae and so on.
I'll see if Darcy, Darcy can.
Yeah, I, you know what, I remember a detailed study, I remember the numbers, I have a feeling you store numbers in your, quite well.
My recollection was that they found about point eight cars per bedroom, something like that, and then this was allocated at one per bedroom basically, and so it was like twenty-five percent more.
Yeah, and so that, that's correct. I think for, compared to many transit adjacent projects, which sometimes go down to point five, five stalls per unit under some provisions of state law now, um, this has a little, a little bit of a buffer to accommodate anticipated demand, which can fluctuate, um, over time, over life of a project. But as you point out, there is a special condition of approval that addresses, um, resident parking permit programs, if those were to be enacted, that would prohibit these apartment tenants, um, or condo tenants from utilizing that, you're correct. And there's a number of other, of parking, um, you know, parking items that are also addressed in the, in the conditions of approval that would be applied for the life of the project.
Just to expound upon that briefly, uh, worth noting that this project at four hundred and twenty-seven units has a total number of parking stalls at six hundred sixty-nine. Now, some of that is for commercial parking, but it is true that the residential parking is parked at approximately one parking space per bedroom, consistent with city codes, uh, which as has noted is, um, quite a bit more than, uh, other projects that are currently under review. For example, I think the, uh, member of the public was referring to the project at seven thirty-two and seven forty El Camino Real. That project is being, uh, proposed to be entitled under state, uh, codes and that project is providing a hundred and thirty-six units, but only twenty-five parking stalls. And so that, that's also one benefit to extending this entitlement because this entitlement was, uh, accomplished under the city, uh, regulations. Uh, and if a project is developed, uh, because this is within the transit, uh, district, uh, under, uh, state, then state laws that allow for waiver of parking requirements, you can have a building, uh, that is the same number of units of this, but it has significantly less parking. Uh, and so, uh, this is an entitlement that the city did work very hard on, uh, to ensure that there were mitigating factors, not just for parking, uh, but for other items.
This actually brings up a quick question, which I mean, I, I think it's a pretty straightforward yes or no. If we did not extend this, does the developer still have the option to come back with the SB thirty-five proposal that was floated briefly in, uh, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen?
Uh, I think that's a very good question and it is a simple yes. Uh, but I think it's worth clarifying that the action that, uh, the Planning Commission would be recommending that, and that, uh, potentially the city council, uh, would take, would be to extend this entitlement. That does not mean that this project will ever be built, nor does that mean that a property owner, the current or a future property owner, uh, may not seek to re-entitle the project, uh, under state, uh, rules or in some different configuration. Uh, and so, um, those options are always on the table, uh, for the property owner.
And I, I do also want to just point out that the, that the zoning for the property is, is not TOD, it's planned development. So the zoning matches the current development, so the, um, any future development proposal would need to include a, a rezoning of the property, um, as well. So it wouldn't be, it would not be a straight, uh, SB thirty-five project.
All right, thank you, were there any further questions from the commission? Uh, seeing none, do we have a motion? I have the, uh, the page from the packet in front of me. Um, I guess I can move that we adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with Williams Portfolio Sixteen, based upon the findings of approval in the ordinance, including a sequoconformity determination.
I'll second.
Thank you. Just to clarify, staff had recommended some, uh, authority to the city attorney and staff to just clean up a couple of things, referring to the amendment rather than the development agreement itself. Um, if we could just include that motion, that'd be great. Certainly, uh, I'm happy to accept a friendly amendment.
Second of all.
Great, thank you. Is that where, are we good with that, we can move forward with a roll call? All righty, roll call please, LSAO.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Beasol.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Le.
Aye.
Five, zero motion passes. All right, thank you. Again, thank you to our commenter. I hope your concerns are addressed. This is just a, a quick point of this, is this one of the items that can be appealed to city council? Or this is just a recommendation? Because it's a resolution. This is not one that we have a ten-day appeal period on, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. That concludes our public hearings. Do we have any further business? I believe we have an item from staff on the ARC committee.
Our standing request for members for the September meeting, as of this time, we do not have any, any items for that agenda, but that might change, so. So any, any
September fifteenth.
So if I can get, get three volunteers. Mary Lou, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Kelly. And one more. Val, thank you, Val.
I'm looking, I can be an alternate if necessary. It looks like it is open on my calendar.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we, it is not in the agenda, but we do usually give one last opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda before closing things out, I think. Really quickly, do we have any hands with any public comment on items not on the agenda? All right, I do not see anyone. Do we have any items from members? Seeing none. All righty, in that case, oh, was there a hand? I thought I saw a hand blink. Uh. Yeah, there's a hand. Bruce. Mr. Herman. Yeah, you have permission to talk.
Ah, yes, good evening, everybody. I pushed the button too late because I was on a YouTube version of the meeting instead of the Zoom meeting, and I wasn't able to make a public comment when you were beginning the agenda item and the vote that you've had on the Mills Park extension. The only thing I wanted to add to that conversation is that while that's extended and not being developed, that area is sitting, you know, vacant with businesses moving out and the potential for some real blight right in the center of our most precious part of our city. So I hope that whoever is agree, you know, I understand that businesses need time, that this has been an exceedingly difficult economic time for lots of development issues. And obviously, extending is a good idea. But I hope that whoever negotiates this extension puts them in a position financially where they have to declare that they are still viable to do this development and that we don't have a, a long period of empty lots sitting where a lot of businesses used to be in that Mill Park area. I think about the Glenview development that died in two thousand and twelve, fourteen, whatever it was, that took until now, ten years later, to get a new purchaser in to redo that. And we don't want that happening along the center of San Bruno. That's all.
Thank you for your well-considered comment. All right. There are no further comments from the commission. We have reached the end of our agenda. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM. Thank you to the commenters. Thank you to staff and consultants who presented. And we are adjourned.